Hello, everybody. Welcome back to Bridging the Gap. My name is Colin McEvers.
My name is David James, and our guest today is the president of the county council, John Cannon.
Hey, Ryan, good to be here.
Thank you for coming and sharing this time with us.
Sure, definitely, definitely. So, our first question that we have for you, Mr. Cannon, is how long have, and you touched on this a little bit before the camera started recording, how long have you been on the county council for Wycomico?
I've been on since 2006, November 2000, or December of 2006. I did take about a four-year hiatus in between that from 10 to 14, but then I got back on and I've been on ever since.
Alrighty.
So, yeah.
Wow, wow. So, during that time, you've been on there just as council or?
Well, I've been on, I think when you add it all up, it comes into about, I think, I think about nine years I've been on the president of the council and a few years vice president of the council, yes. Spent one, yeah, that's pretty much the crux of it.
Wow. So, what's the difference between just being council and being the president of the council?
Well, as president of the council, you do have to be completely aware of every single issue that's, you know, coming across the table. A lot of times after a meeting, I'm not always sure exactly what happened during that meeting because you also have to run the meeting at the same time. So, there's a lot to that, and the council president sets the agenda prior to the meetings.
Sure, sure.
So, I have to know what I think are the highest priorities for the county as well as for the council to address.
Wow, wow. So, at the same time, you also are at-large seat right now, right?
Sure, yeah.
So, you've been at-large the whole time as a councilman?
Yeah, I always do that, Dave. I could have run for my district at the time, which was District Three.
Right.
But I, for some reason, I felt, you know, if I'm gonna do it, let me get in completely engaged. So, I immediately ran at-large from day one. When I first ran, the county only had the seven council members. So, when I was in for my very first year as council president, Rick Pollitt was the very first county executive. So, we were the first two to experience that from day one.
Wow. Okay, and speaking of districts, actually, there's gonna be, there's a redistricting that the, that's been brought about by the, what was it, NAACP?
NAACP, yep.
NAACP. How do you feel about that, you know, professionally, personally about the redistricting and what's gonna be happening with that?
Sure, you know, I had an issue with that, you know, both in philosophy and in the process, both of those. Philosophically, I didn't really feel as if the at-large positions were a hindrance to any type of equity. I actually felt that the at-large positions were a benefit. Because if you're a representative of any one of the five districts and you don't really have a good relationship with your representative, or your representative just isn't doing the job, right? And that could be in any one of the districts. At least you had the option to go to the at-large council members to express your concerns with them. So, I thought it was always an advantage. It gave any district, any district, including a minority district, the right to have options in case they weren't satisfied with their district.
Speaking of minority district, what qualifies a district to be a minority district?
I guess, well, they look at the numbers as far as what the, what the race might be in that particular district. So, I don't know how they specifically do it, Dave. I don't know if they just say, well, this is a, this is a white district and this is a non-white district.
Right.
I don't know who or what numbers go into play as far as considering that a minority district, but that would be my guess. But I, I'm sorry, I didn't finish my thought.
Yeah, sure.
My bad there. But I talked about the philosophy, which I fully disagreed with, but the process was something I really was upset with. I felt that it was a real rush to judgment. I did not like whatsoever the way they disparaged Wycomico County as a whole and really portrayed Wycomico County as a white supremacist county. I grew up in Wycomico County. I was born here. And I've seen how things have developed, et cetera. And, yeah, there's problems throughout the, you know, throughout the country, and you can sort of make claims in the history of just about any county. But I feel that is Wycomico County has really come a long way in their processes.
Sure.
And what troubled me more than anything was the fact that they actually said these very disparaging things in reference to the citizens that live here. But what really bothered me more was that they claimed that there was resistance to allowing any fairness in the electoral process for minorities. What really killed me, Dave, was that just within the last series of four or five years, we went through a complete redistricting after the census, the 2020 census. We went through total redistricting. For almost a year, we had a committee that met to talk about how are we gonna redistrict?
Sure.
Not one, not one member of this group came to those meetings at all and had any concerns whatsoever as to whether or not the minority district or the at-large positions were racial inequity. Never. There were two individuals on the committee that brought the, that broached the subject.
Sure.
And, right, they were white. They were not, they weren't, you know, they weren't non-white, however you phrase it. But this, this group never came there. Not only that, but then we had, outside of the redistricting, we had charter review committees where they could have come to the charter review committee and said, we want it put on the ballot. I'm talking about several different election cycles where they could have come and said, we want this put on the ballot. We want to change this for more, you know, to demonstrate more equity within the county. Never came to any of the charter review committees to discuss it. Best part? Two days before they stood on the steps of the government office building with their press releases that they were going to sue Wycomico County for racial discrimination, two days before that, we had a county council meeting. Not one of those individuals came to the county council meeting and said, hey, you know, we have a problem with, you know, with how this is, you know, how these, how these districts are being laid out. So, that's the problem. They never came to the council, they never came to the redistricting committee, they never came to the charter review committee, but they stood on the steps and filed a claim against us, which could have cost us $400,000. But luckily, Shaney Shields and I, we went to Baltimore to, to an arbiter to settle it for about $125,000. And now, after the fact, they said, well, that's a small price to pay for, for social equity. Of course, my answer to that was 50 cents is a lot cheaper. You could have sent us a letter with a postage stamp and made a request, and you probably would have achieved the same goal.
Wow. Yeah, race grifters are a real problem nationwide, and I guess this is a local example of it. People that, you know, try to use racism and discrimination and things like that, even if it's not prevalent to, you know, make a name for themselves, make money, things like that.
Right.
It seems like this case had a lot of that in it.
Yeah, and I'm not blind to the fact that there's social inequity. I get that. But to, to, you know, to file a complaint to the degree that they did and to put the entire county, the 107,000 citizens of Wycomico County into that type of a position when all that was needed was a phone call, a conversation, or just a letter. And that, that was the disappointing part of all that.
There's one word here that's kinda getting under my skin, the word equity. I like the word equality. And I, I mean, personally, just being a, I guess, if you're saying a person of color, I want to actually be able to, if I was to run for a council seat or as an executive or something, I want to be able to be elected based upon the fact that I could get the job done.
Exactly.
You know, it's kinda like in school, John, when I was in school, if, if I'm racing against Colin, don't give me a head start because my color of skin.
Right.
So, I mean, again, thank you for informing us on what, on that, and, yeah, I can, I can see how that could be kind of questionable. Now, as far as the districting, how it is now, why was it number seven districts before instead of two at-large?
I don't know. I don't know, Dave. It's before my time. They'd always just had five or two.
They always had it.
Yeah, I guess for the same reason where they had, felt that at least if there were two, that could represent everyone in case they felt alienated from their particular representative.
Sure, sure.
They'd have an option somewhere else to go.
So, and I remember a few minutes ago, you were saying as council president, you really have to do a lot, you have to be a lot, I mean, you know what's going on, and you have to set up the agenda, and as being at-large, that, and I made this comment whenever I chopping it up, like, even with this city, their council leadership is named, is the council president.
Right.
Do you feel that, like, okay, if we think upon the federal level, you have the House Speaker, would it be better known as House Speaker or President? Because if you have an executive form of government, does that, like, do you see what I'm saying? Because you have to be everywhere as, as council president, right? But then, does the executive have to be everywhere?
Yes.
So, does that put both of you kind of like, you see what I'm saying? Everywhere?
It's just a matter of collaboration. I mean, you know, the executive does their job, I do my job, council members do their job. I'm not so sure that Jeff Merritt doesn't go to more things than I do now.
He does go to a lot.
He does. He's very responsible. He takes it very seriously.
Wow.
I think, I think he's continuously on the phone, and, and all the council members, you know, are very good at doing their part.
Yeah, right.
I just know, I just know and experience more of what Jeff's doing because he's the vice president. There's a lot of times I have to ask a question or need him to step in for me, and he does it immediately, so.
Wow, wow.
A lot of work.
Okay.
It's more than two days a month, though.
Yeah.
More than two days a month.
I mean, you're on a lot of different boards, too. I was doing, I actually was talking a few minutes ago before we went on air, did a bio on you and see that you're kinda everywhere.
Right.
I mean, how many boards are you currently on?
I think I'm on five, with the SWED, the airport, the library, the, not the Farm Bureau, but anyway, about five of them I'm on there.
And you were once Tri-County chairman?
I was once chairman of the Tri-County Council, yeah. You're doing your homework.
Wow, busy man. Now, has that, I don't know, has, what has that, how's that made you, where you are right now, being involved that much in community?
Yeah, I'll tell you, it's, it's nothing but rewarding. You know, everybody knows about the headaches because you read those in the, you read those in the headlines.
It's easy, yeah.
But from what, what I get to do, believe me, it has its share of very hard work where you're up until midnight making sure you know everything. When I go to a council meeting and I have people sitting in front of us, I have to make sure that they're gonna be asked the right questions and that their time is not gonna be wasted when they're sitting in front of the council.
Wow.
And that's a very primary responsibility. So, you have to know every, all the detail inside and out, and it's a lot of stuff sometimes, such a scattered, different series of subject matter that you have to prepare for. But it's rewarding. It is very rewarding. I like it, you know, the branching out to the community and having the opportunity to get to know and to meet people such as yourselves, and it's, that's very rewarding for me to be able to do that. Wouldn't have any other reason to really talk to you guys if I weren't in this position I am right now.
Wow, wow.
Yeah.
Thank you. How did you acclimate to that when you first became a councilman, like, your first term?
That's a really great question. Let me tell you how, it's surprising because the very first, the very first year I got on, the very first meeting I had to go to, I'm president of the council. It was the Salisbury J.C.s. It's a leadership training organization back then, and there were a lot of us there. And that's what actually changed my course and actually got me, made me decide I wanted to do more than just what I was doing. I wanted to be, you know, have a broader, broader impact upon the community. But not only that, but they taught you, they taught you the ins and outs of how to run a meeting, what you needed to know. And, and I was president of the Salisbury J.C.s, so we did this every day, or every meeting, we were already doing this. I had a friend of mine say, you've only been on like two weeks, how do you know what, and that was it, really. It was surprising that that led to that type of, you know, support, that type of education before I actually got on the council.
Definitely. I'm sure it, a lot of, for a lot of people, when they first join something or elected to a position, it takes a little bit of a while to kind of become fully experienced or fully effective in that position. How long do you think it took for you, you said something along the lines of two weeks, but how long do you think it took for you to become like an effective council president, a leader that, you know, effectively organized things in the business of the county?
That's, that's for other people to tell you. I can answer that question for you, to let them tell you how long it took me to catch on. I think, I think I took to it rather quickly, I really do. And again, it comes back to the fact of the training that I had with, with the Salisbury J.C.s. Because you dealt with a lot of people. We had about 100 membership, and you had to run a meeting there and keep everybody in order. And they always challenge you with Robert's Rules to know, you know, when it, when any type of measures could be taken to the table. But I just enjoyed it from day one, and I felt, it's just like, I just felt normal in that role.
I see.
And there's things that you can get caught up with, and sometimes I found the biggest thing you have to be careful about is not making a commitment too soon, because there's times when I've made a commitment to a particular person or a particular cause, and then another set of circumstances, you go, I don't think I can honor that. And that's tough when you have to possibly go back and say, we have to, you know, kinda like change that a little bit. But it's, in the long run, it's all worked out, I think, pretty well.
Wow. In your tenure, on your tenure on council, what is the one trait that you think that you have now that would be hard to replace, what have you?
I tell really good jokes, David. I got great jokes, nobody knows. But the reality, that wasn't a very good joke, was it? But the reality of it is, is the only thing I can say, and nobody's indispensable, okay? But I just know that I try very hard to be very pragmatic about how I address everything. I try to be extremely diplomatic about it. I always make sure that I take care of any of the constituents. If I get an email or if I get a phone call, I respond to that, I respond to yours.
Yes, you do.
Maybe not in a timely manner, but I try to get back to you every time.
You're pretty good.
But that's really the key, is that you have to make sure that if somebody comes to you and they have a question, all they want is for you to take care of their, any issues that they might have.
Mm-hmm.
It's not that difficult. All you have to do is try to, you know, follow, follow through. So, if anything, I just say that I try to be very pragmatic, very diplomatic about how I address things, and maintain the decorum of the, of the job, and at the same time, do the hard work it takes to, to address the issues and know exactly what you're voting on.
Able to talk across the table with others that are not, maybe not your party line? Is that what you mean?
Well, I'll tell you what's very interesting, and we said this before, we've got seven council members, and I have walked out of a council meeting so irritated with one or two council members.
I can't believe that.
Who took a different position on something that I really wanted to push. But they're still great friends of mine, so we all still get along, so you have to have that element. You can't, you don't wanna be too thin-skinned about it. You have to have the temperament for, you have to have the temperament to be in politics, period.
Definitely, definitely. I've only been, really, you know, involved in the political sphere, not even as an elected person for the past year or so, and I've seen a lot of things, so it's, I'm sure that it takes a lot. I was actually curious, I know that maybe a couple months ago or something, there's currently an initiative, and I had spoke about this at one of the council, county council meetings a couple of weeks ago, in regards to the term limit petition that's currently going on. And I believe that it was initially an amendment that was proposed to the council, and I know only like one person voted yes on it, and I know that you and the others, the majority said that it wouldn't be necessary, voted against putting term limits on the, on the ballot in 2026.
Right, right.
What would you say is your main opposition to the term limits initiative?
Well, it's similar to a friend of mine, Mark Kilmer, he used to say, he was on the council a while back, and he says, well, you already do have term limits, it's the ballot box. That's what tells you, really. And I get it, because sometimes, and not to disparage anyone, but sometimes you'll watch what's going on in Washington, and there'll be interviewing some, some representatives there, whether they're, you know, in the senate or whatever, but, and you're thinking, wow, first, you know, you kinda think, the person's been around quite a while. But I don't not believe in term limits whatsoever, because if they're, if they're really not, shouldn't be there, it's the constituents that should make that determination, period. I mean, I have people, I've been around for forever, 19 years, and I had, I was throwing all my signs away four years ago, five years ago, and I had people who talked me into running. And I ran, and I won. You know, I'm getting those, the votes that say, well, maybe there shouldn't be term limits, or the public wouldn't have that option. They wouldn't be able to exercise their democratic, you know, rights to say, I wanna see him and, you know, back in that, in that role. So, to arbitrarily say, we're gonna have term limits, and I know there's term limits on the governor, there's term limits on the president, not sure how all that happened. But if I'm being asked, I would say, no, I don't believe in term limits, I think the public should make that determination. Mike Lewis, do you think that Mike Lewis should only have two terms? Do you think Jamie Dyke should only have two terms? Right? So, who is it to decide whether or not there should be term limitations except for the public in the ballot box?
Certainly. I actually, I actually agree on the point of giving people the choice as to whether or not they wanna vote for people. And that's one of the things that actually comes up when I, when I tell people about the term limits thing.
When you try to change your life.
People, people say that, you know, I think it'd be best, term limits are, you know, is the vote session.
Sure.
But in regards to putting on the ballot and allowing people to make that choice as to whether or not they want to impose limits on their, you know, on their council people, on whoever it might be, this, of course, is particularly related to the Wycomico County Council and County Executive.
Right.
You know, is that something that would be a negative thing, allowing citizens to, you know, make that choice?
Colin, that's the democratic process also. So, you know, have at it. I just gave you my opinion, period.
Sure.
And, you know, to me, you could possibly look at losing some very great people that wanna, you know, serve the community. You could lose the institutional knowledge that's really, really very important. I mean, you know, if you live two years, two terms, you could easily, without, in no time at all, lose the institutional knowledge that's really, really important at some time. But, and people wanna, people wanna change, too, right? So, yeah, it's a democratic process. Put her on the ballot, see what the people say.
Now, has this ever been an issue in Wycomico term limits? I mean, was this ever brought to the table before?
I don't think, I don't think it's ever been really brought up seriously. I don't recall anybody actually going to the, to the extent of having petitions or going out and actually, you know, putting petitions out there to be signed.
Sure.
But again, it's, it's part of the process.
Now, within your years in office, what would you say to, like, Colin here, you're about to turn 21, right?
Yes, a couple, a couple months from now, yeah.
Right now, don't delay.
Yeah, yeah. So, what would you say to someone that's maybe his age getting into politics? Looking at a younger John Cannon, what would be the top three things you would tell him?
Well, first of all, he wants to make sure he's registered as a Republican, Dave.
Okay.
That's important.
Gotcha.
That's one of my jokes, right? But no, I would say, I would say, just go ahead and do it. I literally, I mean, as long as I've been doing it, I wish I had started eight years sooner, just for how things transition. But do it right away, it's nothing but rewarding. It really is. And it's so challenging. It forces you to be a better person, because you have to make yourself study, you have to make yourself know what the issues are. So, when you're gonna get out there and you're gonna debate in a forum, it's a crash course. It's a doctorate in able to get there and talk to all these people that top of your, just top of mind awareness, they're gonna change the subject at any moment, and you have to probably know one of 20 different subjects, you know, whether they ask about airports, or roads, or education. But the most part, you don't wanna fake it. It can get really embarrassing if you try to fake. I did have to say one time that I didn't know the answer to one topic, but it was really easy, and if I could remember off the top of my head, but there was a terminology they used for property that had, it wasn't brownfields, but it was similar to that. And it was funny, because I had written it on a legal pad, and when they asked me that question, I said, you know, I have that on a legal pad at home, but I'm gonna have to get back to you on that. But my point being is that you don't wanna be embarrassed by that. So, I would always say, make sure you do it, but take it seriously. I see so many people who filed for office and you never see them again. Really surprised me. That's what's surprising, we were talking about, about, you know, the redistricting and all that, is I'm the guy who ran. They say that the at-large position isn't fair, but I'm the guy who ran in the at-large for the last, you know, how many years?
Sure.
And I witnessed it, where people put their name in the arena and they, you know, they said, I'm running, but they did not do the work. And if you're wondering sometimes how some people did get elected and some people didn't, a lot of times when the people did not get elected, it's because they didn't do the work. Some don't even show up for forums. The only thing I'd say is take it seriously. Don't embarrass yourself, you know, take it seriously.
One thing I can definitely tell you, and I'm pretty sure that he wouldn't mind me telling you this, he probably already told you, Councilman Wynn made a really, he had a good compliment for you. He said, nobody knows how to run a meeting quite like John Cannon.
Oh, James said that. I appreciate that.
So, would you say that during your time in office, like, if you see someone else, like, let's say, okay, on a city level, okay, we got someone like Mr. Doughty in the same position.
Right.
What would be something you would tell him and advice as far as how to do that, how to run a meeting?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, there's so many nuances involved in a meeting specifically. You have to know when, how to steer it in a particular direction so you don't get off course, because you have, you can get distracted by issues that really aren't relevant to the topic. But it all comes down that if you know pretty much every aspect of the discussion, then it makes it much easier for you to help control the, the conversation in the room at that time. I think that's probably the key. If you feel like someone is asking a question and another issue comes up that may be more relevant or more pertinent, you try to make sure you can drill home on that particular issue. It's, it's very subtle sometimes, but I think it comes down to just making sure that you're prepared for just about anything, because you never know what's gonna happen at the table, you just don't.
Wow, wow.
So.
Colin?
True.
Well, what do you think?
I, I, no, I, I agree.
So, I have, I do have my final question. I just wanna see if you got one before it.
Oh, no, I, you know, I have some, but.
Go for it.
Ask away.
Well, my, my questions were going to just, I actually, you know, mostly was just like general things, like term limits and other things that I had discussed. So, you can ask your question actually, and I might think of something when you say it.
Well, I just, I just heard you were talking about you were thinking not running at one time, and this might be in the past, but I wanna ask you now. I've heard speculation that you're not running, but are you running?
Is that your question?
That is my question.
See, I have my own degree, I have my own set of term limitations, okay? And so, my decision is that I'm not going to run again, so you have that answer. I don't think it's a big secret. That's my term limitation, by myself.
So, you just put a term limit on yourself, you're dying?
Yeah, yeah, 26 is it. Doing a long time. I've enjoyed it, but I really wanna get back to more personal stuff, you know? This is every morning, I have, I check my calendar every morning. And I don't, I don't check my calendar to see whether I kiss my wife good morning or anything like that, or whether we're gonna go out to dinner that night. I check my calendar, she's very, you know, 99% of my life, of course, but I check my calendar, because I need to know exactly what, what county things I have to do each and every day. It's, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying it's, you know, I'm not, I'm not sort of, I'm just saying very specifically that that's part of what it is.
I mean, as just councilman, though, or is that period? Like, I mean, we're not no delegate in anything else? You're done with politics after this time?
Yeah, yeah, sure. My district is in Chris, Chris Adams' district, and I have a lot of respect for Chris Adams.[1534.91] He gets the job done.
Yeah, Tom Hutchinson is a good guy, too. Both of them do a good job over there.
But Chris is the one, really. Tom does a good job as well, but Chris is really the representative as the,
I got you.
As the Wycomico County resident.
Okay.
That's how they do that. It's an odd thing how they break that up.
It is, it is.
But Chris is doing, Chris is doing a great job. Plus, in all honesty, when that position was open, I was like, I don't think so. It, it's five counties. Five counties. You might as well run for Congress, right? Five counties. And I realized, I guess where I kind of drew the line. I just was fine with Wycomico.
Well, I'm going to say this, this will be funny, but at the same time, not even the executive. I mean, we do have Michelle Gregory that was against the executive position but now running. No? Not even that?
No. Wow.
So I know that a lot of people who aren't necessarily running for things are still going to be involved in the campaign, the electoral process come 2026. It's going to be a big year, you know, it's midterms. I, I foresee a lot of people going out, knocking doors, supporting particular individuals. Do you see yourself being involved in the campaigning process in 2026, at the very least?
That's a good question. Probably, I probably.
He's going fishing.
Probably not. Probably not so, probably not so. It depends. I mean, if there's a real interest that I have with a particular person that I know, I'd really like to, to help out and see in that position, I would probably do some work with them. I would certainly meet with anybody and sit down for two hours if they want to know every complex issue in the county that, you know, that I could help them with. I wouldn't have any reservations to that. But I, I think, you know, out in the forefront there as far as, you know, working with the debates or door knocking and things like that, probably, probably a factor of that. Yeah.
I see, I see. I'm thinking of a hypothetical. I know that in the past 2024 election, there was the question A thing that was on the, on, on the ballot, too, to do away with the executive branch of government. If someone that you believed was competent, that wanted to run for county executive, something along those lines, would you support that individual? Or do, the, the, actually, the first question would be, do you still think that the executive form of government should be removed and then?
I, I'm still not in favor of the executive form of government. I know that back in 2006, when it first put in, I probably voted for it because I thought everybody thought it would be a good idea to have one person that, you know, going to be running the county and, you know, the council is legislative body. But over the years, I've really learned, and I've been through all of them. There's good, there have been great executives, and there have been executives that are not so great. And I found out, though, from my perspective, is that I think that a county at this level, at a local level, it's much more efficient and effective and representative and transparent, or whatever ones you want, to have a seven-member council, you know, addressing the issues of the county. Everything has to be done in collaboration. There can't be any personal agendas. If something goes wrong, the council body has to stand there in the public and explain it and deal with it. I think with the executive form of government, you have too many circumstances where things may happen where we're not quite sure what's, what may have caused a problem or something like that. And it's almost human nature, I think, sometimes, that if you can sort of circle the wagon. And I feel like that happens a lot with the executive form of government. And nothing gets disclosed. I don't think there's honestly true transparency. And that's just, that's just the way it is. And, and, and of course, anybody can say, well, all you do is just vote them out. And somebody else saying, that's true. You could always do that. But I think it's more consistent with the seven-member council. And people say, well, the seven-member council, they, they only meet twice and there's, you know, and, but that's not really the case. There's a lot of work, and you'll have a county administrator that will work for all seven members and is responsible for all seven members. So they can't have any personal privileges, whereas they may decide one thing that's against the will of the actual council. So the county council as a whole, people can't forget, the county council as a whole gave you Shorebird Stadium. They gave you the Civic Center that you have now. They gave you so many of the, of the schools that have been built now, the fire departments, the sheriff's department. They all handled that quite well for many, many, many years. And I've just witnessed that over these last several years, that a lot of times, I've never seen more speed bumps in the road than I have with the executive form of government, which kind of surprised me. And there was a time at one point in time where we couldn't even go to the bond market and bond. You know, the county came to a standstill because of certain issues that occurred with the executive branch of government that kept us from being able to do that, to go to, to go to New York and go to the bond market. And there's many other examples. Well, I think from what you have read, both of you guys read, read a lot on social media or on the news or in the paper where you've seen, you know, a lot of controversy. And I just think that, I don't think it's necessary to have that type of controversy. And I think when you have seven members of a county council, as I told you before, yeah, we may not agree with everything, but we do collaborate. And that's really important when you're, you know, when you're dealing, doing the public's work.
You had mentioned some of the accomplishments of the county council. In the past 19 years that you've been on the council, what do you think is your, has been your signature, your biggest accomplishment that you've been directly?
I think, Colin, it comes down to, and it's, it's an order of ad, it's kind of like, will I be leaving it in better condition than it was when I first came in? And I think that's an unequivocal yes. When I look at the success we have with an airport, we're getting, we're having a new airline down to Orlando right now. We've got a runway extension. We've got an air, air, a mechanic school. There's so many successes we've had with the airport. I think we've built five schools since I've been in. Got the sheriff's department and, and what we've done in order to, you know, give all the, the men and women of law enforcement, the, the, the salaries that they feel they're, they need and the benefits that they feel like they need. We've got a new sheriff's building. We've got a new library. We're going to have a library in Parsonsburg now. This one's going to be in the war museum. There's so many successes you can look back on and say, wow, this has done a really good job. And we've managed to maintain a revenue cap for all these years with everybody pushing back and saying, oh, you have to have a revenue cap. And I say, why do I have to have a revenue cap? We just had $17 million this year, more than we had the year before. So something's going fairly well. And a revenue cap strictly is the purpose outside of making sure the government spends what's in its means. When assessments go through the roof, like everybody's witnessed, especially over these last few years, right?